I'd like to call to order the meeting of the school board for Community Unit District 186. And Nancy, will you take role, please?
Yes. Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Mrs. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green absent. Mrs. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rundy?
Here. Mrs. Dorr, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need an approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, is there any additions? I believe there is one.
There is. Under Old Business, we're going to add an item number zero, so that the architects can go first, and they're going to talk to us about the... Auditorium. Performing Arts.
Auditorium.
It's hard to change.
I know. Or the auditorium. Okay, I need an approval for the agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need an approval for the consent agenda, which includes District 186 Special Board Minute Meetings dated April the 24th, 2017; District 186 Special Board Meeting Minutes dated May the 8th, 2017; Tri-County Minutes dated April the 12th of 2017; Tri-County Bills for May of 2017; Applications and Reports. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need an approval of District 186 Bills for May of 2017. Before we get there, is there any questions on the board for Mrs. Bush?
I have a couple of questions. When I saw that we paid a deaf interpreter, was that for the graduation ceremony, or do we have a need?
An IEP student, I think, for a parent. Mr. Keener wasn't for a parent.
Middle School, Community Communications.
Yes.
Two parents or else?
Yes.
Like during IEP meeting or something?
They're deaf, the child's hearing.
And I saw we paid some bills for the elevator renewal maintenance? Was it like a checkup? I'm just wondering how that went.
We're constantly paying bills for the elevator. But this was an inspection. We did have an inspection on this one this time. Were you looking at one specific?
Well, there's two. I mean, we paid the fire marshal and the elevator.
The pageant.
Did it page?
Yes, we did have one maintenance bill and inspection.
Aye.
We did have a cut this month.
Okay.
I honestly wouldn't be surprised if we had maintenance on here every month until we get it replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one question.
Yes.
Which is on page, I assume, two. The decor equipment?
That large one, is that the one you're looking at?
Yes.
All the new trash receptacles at the high school. The parking lot, all over the grounds.
The painted tubs are gone.
Okay.
And there were twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-eight. That's a lot.
Okay.
So I have.
Elevator inspection. So why are we paying so many people to inspect?
Which one? Who's the vendor on that one?
National elevator.
Is that in between though?
Yeah, and the page two came in our packet, so it's not...
Right. It's not done, but here it is. Um, I'm trying to remember. What's that maintenance? I did look at both those bills. I know the fire marshal, that's just an annual that we have to have. And there's also a requirement for it to be inspected by a company that has the specific expertise in elevators, as I understand.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You roll this.
Mrs. Miller? Yes. Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent. Mrs. Gaines?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes. Communications, do we have any?
A few. Dear Mr. Keener, I am excited to share the news that I am expecting a child. My doctor has confirmed my pregnancy and estimated the date of delivery to be August 19th, 2017. I am requesting a minimum of six weeks off for delivery, pending on my condition and when my doctor releases me. Please know that my... Please let me know if you require any additional information and I can provide that. Since my due date is at the beginning of the school year, it is my intention to wait until second quarter to return from my maternity leave. I intend to apply my unused sick and personal days against any time my doctor finds me to be disabled and unable to teach as a result of the pregnancy. My family feels truly blessed, and I am so happy to be sharing this experience with administrators, students, parents, and faculty. Thank you for your continued support. Sincerely, Carla Baker.
Do we have a motion? Second? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Grody and District 186 Board Members, I will be resigning my position as Secretary effective May 22nd. I have the opportunity to be able to stay home and take care of my grandchildren. Thank you for the last 22 years. It has served me well. Tammy Tuttle.
The recommendation is to approve Ms. Tuttle's resignation. We wish her well.
Do we have a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We do wish her well.
Dear Mr. Keener and Murfreesboro District 186 Board of Education, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to work as an EOC aide at Murfreesboro Middle School this year. I have enjoyed my experiences, the students, and the very respectful and welcoming staff at the middle school. I would like to continue to substitute at the middle school if possible, but I am resigning my position as EOC aide effective the end of the 1617 school year. I thank you, your staff, and the students for welcoming me into your school. I have established relationships with many of the students at the middle school that I will never forget, and I look forward to continuing to work with you as a substitute. Sincerely, Cheryl Hinkle.
My recommendation is to approve her resignation and wish her well, and glad to see her coming back to sub. As always needed.
Do we have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Board of Education, please accept my request for permission to continue graduate study and education at Eastern Illinois University. With your permission, I plan to continue enrollment in the summer 2017 semester. I am requesting that the coursework and credit hours be approved toward my salary schedule. The class I plan to take is Practicum in School Leadership, EDL 5893. Thank you for your time and consideration. Keith Jones.
Recommendation is to approve his coursework.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Navarro, I am sending this letter to inform you that I will be resigning from my position as Assistant Coach of the high school golf team. Although I have enjoyed my time coaching these young men and women, I have obligations to my family that must come first. So please accept this letter of resignation. I appreciate your cooperation in this matter. Sincerely, Kyle Smith.
Recommendation is to approve his resignation.
We have a recommendation. Do we have a motion? Second? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carry.
Dear Mr. Grody and Murfreesboro Board of Education, please accept this letter as my official resignation from my position as kindergarten teacher at General John A. Logan Attendance Center, effective at the conclusion of this school year. I have made the decision to accept a position with Ducoyne School District 300. As a resident of Ducoyne, this decision is one which will have a positive impact for my family. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time here and am honored to have had the chance to touch the lives of so many children. It has been as much a pleasure to learn from them as it has been to teach them. Thank you so very much for this opportunity. Sincerely yours, Jamie Brown.
Recommendation is to approve her resignation. Wish her well.
We have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? We do wish her well, too. That's it? Very good. I know we have a few fishbowl items. Where do we start, to my left, whoever has one?
Cruthers has been a busy place since last month. Event activities include Ag in the Classroom Activities, Logan Days, Spring Book Fair, Hosted a Blood Drive for Red Cross, Wildlife Assembly, Fishing at Byers Lake, Six Trees Were Planted with Ben Snyder from Illinois Department of Forestry on the playground, Visit from Fred Bird and Kyle McClellan as part of the Cardinals Doing It Right program, Fourth Grade Spring Scene, Fifth Graders Tucker Horseman and Allison Macy Were Recognized at the Illinois Principals Association Student Recognition Banquet. Beginning bands showcased their progress at the District 186 Spring Band Concert, Raised $1,500 for Jump Rope for Heart, Numerous field trips, Fun Day Tomorrow, Talent Show, And as of May 11th, students at Cruthers have read 1,685,611 words. Whole bunch of words. Bill Hubert, Cruthers School Principal. That's a brat.
Anyone else?
Okay, congratulations to Dawn Taylor. She was selected to present this summer on the MMS Million Words Club at the Nerd Camp held at the University of Michigan. Ms. Taylor is an excellent teacher and student motivator, and we are very proud she is getting recognition at the national level. Jeff Keener.
Congratulations. Now from behind the pillow. Mr. Corley, do you have one?
Yeah. This is from Steve Carrington. A special thanks. A special thanks is due to Mr. Dan Graff of Southern Illinois Security Consultants of Murfreesboro Business. As we were prepping for graduation on Friday, the 12th, we realized that a piece of equipment used for sending the live video signal to the cafeteria was damaged and no longer working. In a bit of a panic, I called Dan, and even though he was not around at the time, he allowed me to go into his office and find some parts that may help us out. After leaving his place, he called back and had a better idea and offered up a replacement part that was better than we had originally, than what we had originally. It is not uncommon for local businesses to step up and help the district out in times of need. But Dan was not just out of town. He was in Colorado attending his child's graduation from a master's program at the university. I cannot thank Dan and his business enough for the quick support that he has provided. Respectfully, Steve Carrington.
Very good.
I'd also like to note that Mr. Carrington spends a lot of time running around and making sure that those things work. A lot of the details get done because of him.
Well, I'd just like to thank not only Mr. Wilson and Mr. Ellamire, but the entire staff for the graduation. I thought it was excellent. And would also like to have the building principals pass along our gratitude for the teachers that show up from the elementary and the middle school. I think that's a wonderful thing, and I know those kids appreciate it when they see former teachers there. So please pass along our thanks. Okay, I'm assuming that's it for fishbowl?
One more thing, because it reminded me, we did do something new this year that I think was well received, and I would expect is going to be a tradition. But the high school went off to the buildings in their caps and bottoms.
Oh, yeah. That was cool.
And marched around, and a few of the pictures got on online, and yeah.
More than a few.
But I think the staff would say it was...
That's pretty cool. Are you? That's cool. Okay, Freedom of Information Act requests.
We had three. We had one from the MEA. This is maintenance overtime and board packets in the bills. I asked for an extension. We're going to give it to them in a timely manner next week. It is going to be a little late, but I'm going to give it to them in a timely manner. We had a FOIA from James Bachman. That's the Illinois Retired Teachers Association. We wanted all of the name of the district email addresses for our retiring educators, and our complete list of email addresses for all district and organizational employees. We gave it to them. And then we had one more FOIA request from the MEA, and this is regarding legal fees and settlement agreements that we have logged through, and I am looking at that information to respond. Those were the three FOIs.
Thank you. Okay, it's time to recognize the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinion and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action by the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? How about employee concerns? Very good. Thank you all. Okay, moving into Old Business. First off, we have our architects here.
We have our architects here. They're going to do a brief presentation. I will say that we, Mr. Seifer, Jan and I, were on a phone conference today with Jim Borland?
John.
John Borland. From the insurance company and the gentleman who, the construction manager on their side. And I would say we are still in negotiations with the insurance company on costs. It's kind of a back and forth. I've never been through this process before, but it really is somewhat of negotiations. Clarifications of different points and whatnot. So that's still moving forward, and it's going well. Then after that meeting, we had a pre-demo meeting with Fager and me today to talk about the building coming down, and it will start right after...
May 24th.
24th is the one it's going to start.
How long will it take then?
They think they'll have it down on the ground in a week and a half.
And clear it up?
Probably another two weeks, I guess, and clear it.
So three weeks roughly?
Yeah.
They have until July 31st is the deadline, but yeah, I don't think they'll be that long before.
Okay.
And so then there's the presentation of the, what's going to be put up there?
Yeah, I'm going to let Randy handle this part. We did, we did meet with Mr. Rundy, and Mr. Beavers, and Mr. Grody, I think it was that last Tuesday.
Couple weeks ago.
It seems longer than that.
And they saw this presentation, and before you guys did, it's building the ground, so we wanted to bring it to the full board tonight and show you what projected Center for Performing Arts will look like.
Not an old architect, old business.
Let me, before you start, can everybody see? Okay. If you can.
What we have here is just a, it's kind of my impression. I'm somewhat familiar with the school district and school, but it's been years since I've been here. So when we revisited the site, my first impression was the approach to the building, you know? And how, back in the 1970s, when the architect designed this building, he was kind of limited to what he could do, I think, from a materials standpoint, but they did a nice job siding the building. So you take a nice approach into the building, and it addresses it very well. I'm struck with the trees and the nice drive as you walk through. So, you know, a lot of times I'm looking for some sort of inspiration, and that's what I'm drawing from here. Every, you know, this auditorium, it's the larger building off to the left. It's, it's an opportunity to change the face of your school, and it will change the face of your school just because of the size of it, the actual mass of it. Came up with a couple of schemes. This is kind of what we settled in for. It's a little more conservative than one of the original schemes, but it works nicely. The goal was to draw attention to the entrance to the school, not the auditorium. You know, and that's a difficult thing to do when your wall panels, your auditorium are 40 foot tall. So you still have to try to focus in on the day-to-day, and that's, that's the area.
That's this area here.
So, you know, we talked about, about the entrance and the materials. The material is used in the auditorium. We're going to be a precast concrete system. It's very efficient. The structural portion of the concrete walls are six inches thick. Has a three-inch rigid insulation in between another three-inch concrete face panel. It looks similar to limestone. Gives a nice finish. The, you can see the panels to the left, which will be the east side, are actually going to be an impression into the concrete panels. They're poured face down, and I'll show you a little better image of that as we go on. The materials over the entrance are a poly product called Trespa. Really haven't settled in on the final pattern yet, but we're playing around with that, that sort of thing. And then beneath that will be glazing, so it'll be a curtain wall system. Just to bring a little life to it, and this is by no means the final product, but you can see, see the materials a little better in this, this image. Another sketch, you know, rough sketch showing, you know, the Trespa panels here are a little bit different, and they're just more of a square rectangular pattern as opposed to the very linear pattern. We are planning to keep the seating area, we're going to clean it out up front, and the sketch kind of depicts that.
You say cleaning out the seating area, you mean there'll be none?
No, no. With a tough point, cleaning the stone, repairing the loose stones.
There are two rocks with nameplates on them, and both of those are going to be removed, and then added back into the, the...
Okay, so that's preserved.
Okay.
This image is, is what you would see if you were facing the proscenium or the stage. The gray area in the center is, is kind of the backdrop. The area around it, framing the stage, will be a wood panel system. You know, it kind of dresses it up nice. If you have concrete block behind that, is what that wall's comprised of. You have very high acoustic grade materials in the, in the auditorium itself. We have overhead panels to help deflect the sound. On the back wall, you will have all sound absorbing material. So it's going to be a very nice acoustical experience when you're there. And visually as well, you know, instead of having the shotgun-type approach for an auditorium, you're going to have a semi-circular approach and have much better viewing angles and a much better experience. This is just a little fly-around that... You can see off to the right, that rectangular shape, that's your gymnasium. So you can see, get an idea for the scale of this new addition as opposed to the gymnasium.
There's the garage door to get in the supplies. Do you want to point out the alternate there, Joe?
Yeah. Randy, can you take it back? Right here would be the classroom addition. That would be the alternate. Two classrooms here, and one over, one would be, one would be a voice training room, the others would be classroom.
So if we could do that a little ahead and did that.
You can kind of see it there at the top and left.
So that's a pretty large covered area right there.
Yes. I figured what you have now.
Just a few photographs, samples of material. This is the Trespa material. It's actually a rain screen, and it's fixed to a structural frame. Again, these are not, these, this isn't exactly what you're going to experience, but it's, just wanted to give you a feel for the material and the appearance. Very durable material. Now, this, this is a nice shot of the, again, this isn't the form line or pattern that we're going to use, but it gives you a nice clean image of what it will look like. So it's not really a color to the wall panel at all. It's just a relief. So when you, when they, when they pour the panels down face down, there's kind of a stencil or a decal in that form. So they, they pull the form or the concrete panel up, remove the form, and that's the impression, that's kind of a negative impression inside that wall panel. And this, this is really similar to, to the parents that'll be on the building. And again, it kind of relates back to that tree. You know, and the, the idea is to break up these panels as you approach the building, so it's just not one massive concrete wall. This is just a general image of the floor plan. The auditorium will seat between 700 and 718 people. We have a main entrance there for auditorium events. There's a new entrance to the school up and out of the photo. You know, the walkways. Talking of the levels, you will come in here at the finished floor elevation. You will walk, be able to walk all the way around to the stage and still be at the same elevation. And here it slopes down gradually, so you have a tier of seedings here in the upper bowl, and then you have a flat walkway here, and more seating here down the lower bowl, again with a slope walkway. And then here you would have the orchestra pit. Lighting will be above here. There will be spotlights in the corners. And we flattened this out, which is, it's a good call that allow you to bring in a portable lift if you need to adjust your lighting or work on those. So, so we're kind of thinking about that and how, how you can operate this facility.
What about wheelchair seating?
Uh, yeah. The ADA requires us to have 16 seats dispersed equally throughout. Yeah, there'll be four here, four here, four here, four here, you know, and a couple there. But everything is ADA compliant from a slope standpoint.
Are restrooms going in there on?
Restrooms are a little bit out of the picture, but yeah, there's a whole new set of restrooms up in this area.
So, basically to the school?
Yes.
The existing school.
Do you have a picture of the new office area, the entrance, and how that's secured?
I don't have one.
Okay.
I'm going to go get the big plan that he's got, so everybody's able to see it real quick.
Well, thanks, Julie.
If you look, Jim brings that back, there's a link here. These will, this is the office in this area, and there's a link here that takes you to the existing school. And there's a set of doors here, which the students and visitors will come to on a day-to-day basis. So they, they buzz in, they're inside this vestibule, and they're really, at that point, they really can't go any further until they're allowed to move in the building. So it's a, that's our security checkpoint. So it's a, that's our security checkpoint. And that's all visible behind glass, so that the, uh, people working in the office can actually see who's, you know, coming in and see who's waiting.
So the existing office we have now, I'm trying to orientate myself.
Uh, some of it'll be used, but then there's a, there's a new addition to it. But we will rework that entire.
The existing office sits in this place right here.
Okay.
So we're turning it around east west and then the new set of bathrooms will be right here. This is an old plan, this, this has moved, actually moved this way a little bit. There's a couple rooms here that disappeared, second floor stuff, but that's pretty much it.
Yeah, this, this is that vestibule walk down area here.
And does that vestibule have bulletproof glass? Or no? Guess not by turning my look on your face.
I mean, it's, it's laminated glass in that it's, they can't kick it out.
Can shoot it out.
You could shoot, yeah, you should.
While we're building something, have we, have we looked into?
How much is that?
Well, 'cause we'd have to do this entire area.
I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know, it's, could be two or three hundred thousand dollars, I don't know.
Unfortunately something we should.
Okay, so that entrance would be for day to day, before having an event at the school.
Depends on where you're having an event. If you're having a gymnasium event, you can keep these doors locked, everybody can come and go at this point.
And then just go straight through.
Yeah, these doors will actually probably disappear, we're just trying to figure that out, make sure code goes over good.
Okay.
Um, if you got an event here, then you can lock all this down. Everybody can come and go here, but you can use this bathroom and also isolate. Here you can isolate everybody from being back here. Day to day, kids can come and go, use this bathroom, they just can't. And once they get out, they gotta come back in. And if they come in, they gotta come in the office, be checked in and let out into the school. Whoever comes, they're at school door.
Unless a kid lets them in the back door.
Let's get, let's get them back in.
The alarms work.
Right, where's the, where's the main entrance of the school?
Right there.
Right there, okay.
Yeah.
That's that big canopy that you saw earlier.
Okay.
Is the, uh, glass glazing something you want to pursue?
We can look at the cost.
Or you, wanna, wanna cost to least evaluate?
A lot of times it's cost prohibitive just because it's such a big amount of glass.
Not that it matters, but of the buildings that you've built recently, has anybody put in bulletproof, uh, nobody?
No, it's all shatter resistant, laminated shatter resistant, abuse resistant glass.
What about just the glass into the office? Can't, that's the, I mean, that's the, because they locked the doors.
You could, that's a, that's a thought.
So you're talking about that vestibule area, just that only, so they'd be kind of caught there?
Cause if you locked, if you locked, if you went on lockdown and shut, right, that, you'd have that capability to lock those doors.
Oh, yeah?
And so really they couldn't get in if there's nobody in the auditorium.
We can look, I'll let.
Yeah.
Like that whole, because you had mentioned it'd be that whole long panel you have to, because that's.
If you just did the office.
Yeah, that would be much more manageable.
Right, but when you, you were referring to the whole long section, because all of that would, is going to be glass? So if you wanna get in, you'd shoot that and then go along there.
See, you can get in that side, you're going in.
Right, okay. That's something worth looking into.
Or the older part of the building, if you're gonna spend that money, you're gonna get in the back.
I mean, if somebody's gonna do something, or gonna try to do it, how?
Correct.
At least try to keep people safe.
Sure. Any other questions?
As far as all the designs being chosen for the outside, you guys are doing it, you're voting, it's already decided. All those designs and patterns. Okay, well, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, windows that get made?
Colors are a lot.
Yeah.
Doors won't be selected to well into the construction process.
So you guys, we'll, we'll have it down the end of June.
You don't want, you don't want the guys making the color choices?
Stencil.
I like the impression. I like having an impression on, like the negative impression, I, I mean, as far as the design, everybody has their own taste.
The other thing that we've discussed is the, the fact that the, um, the yellow banner that's currently around the gymnasium, you know, that's gonna clash with the banner that goes around the auditorium for some time. That's just, is what it is, but.
And Mrs. White signed off?
She said yeah.
Or is she?
She's back there smiling.
Good. Any other questions?
When we, so I'm sorry. When we need to know if we want the, uh, whenever the specs come in on the additions, the alternate bid.
You will need to know that when we text the bid. So we'll, we'll know that July, hopefully, when the lines up right, we get bids. Your July board meeting, you can say, well, we wanna do base bid or we wanna do base end.
Now, in the June board meeting, is that when we will then officially approve the designs and all the specs on that?
I would hope that we don't make any changes at that point. Cause we're real close to being to a hundred percent documents. Hopefully in the next two weeks, to where we can do our internal review and I'll give it to their maintenance guys, so their review. And then we'll be ready to bid hopefully June fifteenth.
And have you contacted the, the pre-qualified titters that we discussed?
They have a problem, I have a function, I don't know.
Okay.
One of the ones we wanted to pre-qualify with.
Hello?
So we're gonna probably have to next.
Next. Okay. All right, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for your time, we appreciate it. I think we're all excited to get this thing moving along, yeah.
Good, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, uh, first item under Old Business is District Financial Updates, this is informational, Mr. Grody?
There's still no state budget. We did sign on with a U forty-six, that's an Elgin. They are the largest school district outside of Chicago Public School. They started a, uh, passed Illinois budget. Four hundred and thirty-two districts representing sixty-nine percent of the students have signed on to that. Uh, and it's kind of interesting because they send out a lot of good information about what's being done regarding trying to get the budget passed. It does sound like there's going to be an appropriations bill, much like we had this year for next year for student funding. I personally would much rather have a full state budget because I'm concerned with our revenues. Last year we had three categorical payments. One from the previous year and then two from actually last year. This year we've got two categorical payments, one that came from the previous year and one that's come this year. That went from three categoricals to two categoricals. We do another year, the state's only giving us the money that they have. So as the, uh, revenue depletes for the state and their debt increases for the state, it becomes harder and harder for them to give us the money that they have. So next year, uh, if you just look at the trend, I have a concern about the categoricals. This year it did, uh, cost us seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, losing those categoricals. Tomorrow, uh, May seventeenth, at the State Capitol, Andy Manar's holding a, uh, rally for the fair funding formula. So there's a lot of working parts. Theoretically, they could still get a budget in the state. I don't think it's going to happen, but theoretically, anything's possible. That's really our update right now. Questions, concerns, comments?
Anyone on the board? Thank you. Registration updates, also informational.
Looking at this today, take one, pass them down. This is, oops. The first page, what we've got here, our kindergarten through fifth grade. And currently we have seven sections of kindergarten, so there's seven kindergarten classrooms. There are, uh, six sections of first grade and seven sections of second, second grade, okay? So what we've done is in first grade, a hundred and forty-nine students, we've moved them all to first graders from kindergarten. So there's a hundred and forty-nine kindergarteners this year, next year there'll be a hundred and forty-nine first graders. If we say exactly where we're at, this is what the class sizes would be, twenty fours and twenty fives in first grade. That is not what I would like. I will also say that right now, a hundred and five is the total number of kids we have registered for kindergarten or planning to be registered for kindergarten. That is higher this year than it was last year at this time. We do project that our kindergarten numbers are probably gonna warrant some discussion on maybe eight sections. Our seven sections are gonna get full if our census reports are correct. So, right now it looks like those class sizes would be fifteen, um, that's not gonna hold. So in second grade.
I'm sorry, do you know where kindergarten is now, twenty five?
Kindergarten, right now, if you go to the second sheet of paper, you'll see kindergarten's got one forty-nine. I took seven classes, so they're around twenty-one, twenty-twos.
So you said that's more than were registered at this time last year, how many were registered at this time?
At this time last year, that'd be a D. Probably in the eighties to nineties, would be my guess. So the second page is kind of what's going on with the classes this year, what we've got. And looking at it, I, I would love another kindergarten, I would love another third grade. And I think that if we can't just add a first grade, moving a second grade to first grade might be possible. There are a lot of moving parts when you start looking at this, like it, uh, it, it, at Carruthers, third grade, adding another, uh, third grade classroom. I think I know where Bill would wanna put it, but then all of our rooms are currently used. I think the reading specialist room might move or, or, I don't know, we'll have to move that away. The last page, the third page, is something that I'm gonna be discussing tomorrow with various people. But, uh, it's special add numbers. You've got self-contained, you've got resource kids. You've got teachers that teach self-contained and then you've got teachers that teach resource. Resource is when you push in or you pull out of the classroom and self contains when you've got that classroom. As you can see, there is, is, is a need at the third, fourth and fifth grade for more supports. Does that come from the general? Do you rob Peter and pay Paul or do you add onto what we have? These are discussions that we're gonna need, um, we're gonna talk about it a little bit in the third session. We'll be speaking about, you know, cause we just got a resignation from a kindergarten teacher. Replacing that teacher would probably make a lot of sense. Like I said, I think we're gonna need a third grade teacher as well. But these are the numbers where we're at right now, um, as I told Jan today. We just desperately need more staff and I'm concerned I don't know how to pay for it, so. But when you look at our class sizes, they're moving it in. And I will say that the discussion right now is, with Caro's housing program closing, what will our influx be over the summer? And so, um, I will be watching very closely over the summer, the number of families registering. You know, even if they come here to housing, I was talking with, maybe I need to contact the person in charge of housing to start getting the number, if they can give me some numbers, cause a lot of times they won't register until the first week of school. And, and I'd like to get the information before that, so.
Does Murphysboro have open housing though, right now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, over.
In Murphysboro?
Believe it or not, there's a lot of empty section eight housing. Questions, concerns, comments on this?
Anyone? It's kind of the good news, bad news. Thank you.
It is definitely news.
All right, board committees, Mr. Grody?
Board committees, we, um, have always seemed to function more as a committee of the whole. I've talked with various other districts, Carbondale ninety-five's really the only one that does a true committee structure and has committee meetings. Lot of places just have kind of key contact people that they talk to and, and run things by and then when they have their whole board meeting, they do a committee of the whole. So the action and the discussions really happen at your, at their monthly meetings. There are districts that do two meetings a month, uh, where the first meeting is all just committee work and the second meeting is all just, uh, business. I definitely think that we need to have a parent advisory committee and a discipline committee because those would be where we actually are gonna need to have meetings where we invite the public in and we get some feedback from the teachers and whatnot. With the financing facility, I, I know we've got contact people and I'd kind of like to keep that as business as a whole. So what I'm looking for right now would be, who would like to be on the parent advisory committee and the discipline committee?
I can do parent.
That was Christine.
So you, you'll do parent and finance, Mrs. Miller?
Well, yeah. We have seven of us and you're gonna have five committees.
I would like two more, one more for parent and one more for discipline.
I'm going to, I'm going to volunteer, Mr. Green, because I think he would.
For parent advisory or discipline?
Parent advisory. And he'll shoot me when he hears it.
Did I, I hear you say, I thank you, Ms.?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'll do the discipline.
Can you read those off, Mr. Grody?
Yeah, so for finance, it's Beavers and Miller. Facilities, Rungy and Beavers. Advisories, Miller and Green. And discipline's going to be, uh, James and Door.
Okay. That was easy.
Anybody for policy?
Hmm?
I have a policy, a committee for policy.
I think the policies will still just be, we bring it to you as a whole and then we discuss it, I mean.
Hold a lot of policies to help review.
Right.
Could be one function of the boards, or of that committee is to help review all the policies. Just my idea, I'm not on it.
Is that it? Okay, title plan enclosure number one from your packet, this also is informational, Mr. Grody?
Yeah, and this is the, the title plan that we've got to file with the state and it really kind of explains how we identify the kids that are struggling. We use, uh, benchmarks, which are typically given three times a year. And then there's interventions and responding to interventions, RTI. You've had the plan to read, are there questions, concerns or comments, just Miss James? She gave me that look, wasn't it, I was assuming.
Yes, can you explain the RTI at each of the buildings, how that works? Do you have any question, like just the reading? Tier two provided in the classroom, tier three is special.
At the general, they are mostly push-in, at centers, right?
Yeah. Those are each one.
At centers, right? At Carruthers, uh, is the reading specialist pushing in at Carruthers or is it a pull-out?
Uh, it's a pull.
A little bit of both, independence?
Middle school's not pull-out?
Middle school, um, they, they differentiate in the classroom, but really they have an RTI at times, scheduled time at the end of the day that they focus in on math and they focus in on, on reading at different times. Their plan for next year is to really try and work on that aspect of their schedule, look at their RTIs. They're changing their benchmarking tool.
Cause Discovery's no longer there.
Yeah, cause Discovery's no longer there and there's been some discussions. Ames Webb, reaching into the middle school, isn't really the most favorite decision. This Thursday, we're actually having a committee meeting for the benchmarking. And I Ready or the NWE map assessment seem to be the two, uh, frontrunners for the middle school. But once you get those benchmarks, then you can really start to try and tailor your instruction cause a lot of those benchmarks will come with interventions or strategies and some of them, like the I Ready even comes with, uh, lessons, correct?
So what specifically are you using for tier three at the middle school? Like any certain program and they're just doing what?
Well, they do MobiMax, they do STAR and.
Teachers do individual instruction, reteaching and interventions in the classroom, the, the computer based.
This is what's being submitted, correct?
This is the rough draft of what's going to be submitted, so it still needs to be tweaked.
I was gonna say, I felt like there needed to be a lot more description of what's being provided and I didn't, from what, I, I couldn't tell that some of these questions were actually being answered in the justification piece. And I felt like number one was focusing on special education.
whereas it asks to describe the well-rounded instructional program for all students. So I think there should also be some mention of what the, not just students that are receiving special education services are getting, but I made up a lot of, and I can share with you some, um... I, let's see. During the initial needs assessment, I- I felt like, um, there could be some more information provided about not just that you do in- in initial needs assessment, but what that actually entails.
The, one of the hard things, with the initial needs, that- that's called an INA.
Right.
And- and, yeah, um.
It's dependent on-
It's dependent on what, on the kid, so I mean, there's, it really depends on what the teachers bring, and through the discussion of that interdisciplinary, that group that- that come up with, but I- I get what you're saying.
Mm-hmm, cause it talks about, I think, in here, the, um, the standardized assessments. But I- I felt like some more language could be added about, um, the teachers, because, you know, we all know that state assessments don't, or any kind of standardized assessment doesn't actually give you a clear picture of what the student is capable of, and so we have to rely on student, or teacher observations.
Right.
And I think we could use some more language about-
I think that INA though, I mean, it would determine what type of testing you needed, de- you know, dependent on if it was learning or behavior.
They'll also say, you know, maybe we need to do this intervention, and then track the data and see how that goes.
Yeah, and that's-
So sometimes it's not even just assessments, but it's-
Right. Yes.
Can you share those notes with me?
Mm-hmm.
I have several. I can, if you want me to, just email them to you.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
You'll incorporate her necessary?
Oh, yeah.
And bring it back?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, the goal is for this to be an action item next month, so that I can submit it and get the- the grant opened and submitted.
Okay. Any other questions on that one, the title plan?
You said they're working on what they're going to do for next year, so that won't be included, because they'll work on that when?
Right.
Over the summer, or beginning of the school year, when you're at?
You mean the benchmarking?
Uh, well, that, and you said the groups about how they're gonna do the teachers. Is that what you told me, is that what you said? Am I wrong back there?
I'm not following.
Oh, okay. So the benchmarking, and you said they were gonna be working on-
Yeah.
Yeah.
School improvement.
That's gonna be next year.
Okay, so that'll be next year.
Yeah.
So it's just gonna be-
That's part of the next year's focus.
Okay. He said over the summer. Okay, all right.
You did?
Okay. It might take him more than summer.
So it won't, it will be vague, because they're going to decide-
Because we're still working that out, and- and it's interesting, 'cause moving on to the next item.
Are we ready? We done with this one?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
You segue perfectly to the next item, and that's next year's focus. We've, every building kind of picked a thing to work on, and the general's going to be looking at, uh, standards-based report cards. Really trying to get a better, clearer description of what the kids are learning and what that means. But when you get to Carruthers, the middle school and the high school, what they're really looking at is the benchmark, interventions, and this response to intervent- response to interventions, the RTI process. And so, we're looking at our special ed numbers, our identification process, and just how we service those kids. Now, at the middle school, we need a new benchmarking tool, and I think that at the three to five, some of them like the Ames Web, and some of them don't, not so much. The Star is something that we use kindergarten through eighth, and I'm looking at the wall over there behind us. But really, what we're looking at is curricular alignment. So over here, we had our half-days. And so, at the beginning of the year, we're gonna do CIST training, which is our new student information system. With the new student information system, every teacher's gonna have a new gradebook. And the parents are gonna have a new portal to come in and see how their kids are doing. So home logic will be no more, it'll be a, uh, power school. We're also gonna use Google App for Education Processes. This is a free service that we're creating to do our transportation, our staff development, all of the things that we currently do through EdAutomate. We're transferring over into this Google App for Education Process, because EdAutomate was the thing that we use with our teacher evaluation tool and all of the processes that they would request. And we're getting a new tool for that. So at the beginning of the year, we're gonna be looking at a lot of those systems pieces. Our first half-day is devoted to Evaluise, which is the tool that's gonna be using the new teacher evaluation system. But then after that, we're gonna start off with data-driven decisions. And we're gonna look at, um, our process of running interventions of- of the curriculum, of the identification of the special ed kids. And so we've lined out our building-based days. Those yellow post-it notes are grade and curriculum meetings. Our contract has four times a year we're supposed to have uh, curriculum meetings, and that's where these committees, we discuss what we would like to have them do. And really, what we're talking about there is creating the RTI process, but then the other side of the triangle for the gifted kid. And really trying to refine, how do we reach every kid's needs? And that's gonna come, once we pick our benchmarks, assessments, we then start really looking at the interventions. And then we give time for the teachers to get together and work on how does this all come together? And that's the focus for next year. And that's what those half-days are gonna be.
You're looking at standards-based grading, or the decision has been made, or?
Kindergarten through second grade wants to, want- want to look at and see what it would look like. And, um, I think it would be a lot better information to the parents than just an A in reading, a B in reading. Grades are kind of hard to articulate, and with the standards base, you can really get into the details of what, where the kid's at, what they need more. You wanna talk to that, Carla? I mean, are you confirmed that, 'cause you and I talked about whether or not we were gonna have the whole standards base done in a year, or would you just spend the year working on reading? I mean, it is a huge project to undertake, and-
I looked at it several years ago, actually. I went to several schools that are pretty much up and coming, and they're all standards-based. So I feel like a standards-based report card gives you a better idea of what that child knows. Um, because we all know an A in one class may not be an A in another class. So with this, it would, we would probably start out with still having the grade, and then underneath the checklist, what skills do they know, what skills do they not know? And then, um, we're just in the the initial stages. I mean, um, we did a webinar already, this next year, we'll start, uh, looking at other districts that have already implemented it. I know I have, uh, this summer, a workshop coming through the Ramp Grant on standards-based, DeSoto just started, so they're going to speak on that. So we just have a committee that's starting to look at it.
And that would just be at that level, or?
Just at that level. And then if it works, though, it can always spread, but it- it really needs to be a teacher-led thing.
Yes, it does.
The- the- the teachers have mentioned many times in curriculum council, we really have a need for almost a folder on every kid that can be passed from teacher to teacher, saying, these interventions worked, these didn't. So that when the kid, the teachers get them, they know exactly where that kid's at. And there's some schools rather that have folders, data folders on each child, and the kids are actually part of creating those data folders and whatnot. I don't, I'm- I'm not saying that that's what we wanna do. What I'm saying is, I- I want my teachers to start really kind of being allowed to explore those options, so. Does that beg enough? I feel like I completely dodged your question, 'cause if the teachers don't, if they find that standards-based report cards are too arduous and too hard, then we need to find either a simpler way to do it, or continue to do the report cards that we're doing.
Well, I think it's just as you move up, when you look at, um, sports and being able, you know?
Yeah.
It's hard to look at that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. New business. Approved tuition-free students for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
And I asked Nancy, and it seems that we do have to name the students that will be coming to us. We didn't, I don't believe in the past, and this might be a change, or we just didn't in the past.
It was part of the waiver process that I met through, so.
So part of the waiver process was that we bring to you the fact that Logan Cheatham in twelfth grade, child of Kim Cheatham, coming from the Trico district, she's an employee, she works at high school. Garrett Spieth is a ninth grader. He's coming from Carbondale District one sixty-five, he- he was with Darrell Young, who is a elementary teacher. And Zoe Moocher, um, third grader, Carbondale ninety-five, parent is George Moocher, he's at the high school. Those would be the three students that would be taking, uh, picking up, using our tuition-free. My recommendation is that we accept them per our policy.
Got a recommendation for the waiver of these three students. Do I have a motion?
We'll move.
Have a second. Have a motion in a second, Nancy.
It can be voiced.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
First reading of the press policy. You have before you. A lot of the changes are, um, standard and based on Google changes. Questions, concerns on those, please bring them to me, we'll have a vote on it next month.
Does anybody have any questions right now?
The one item that stood out to me was the succession planning. And you've got two options with the succession plan. The first one is that I tell you who would replace me should anything happen to me, and you guys approve that, or based on various other things, I would tell you who it should be at that moment. I prefer being able to just assign the person, with the understanding that you guys can have a special meeting and unassign them at any time you'd like. But really, it's kind of, depending on what projects are being done, there might be, you know, a reason I pick one person over another. Out of all the policies, that was the only one that really kind of stood out to me as a could go either way.
Comments, questions? That was informational. Student handbook?
Student handbook. What we've done, as we've done in the past, is the, much like our press policy, the IPA provides a service, and the student handbook, um, is very legalistic that way. It goes with the, the board policy. So every time you- you get a change in your board policy, the IPA does a good job of making sure your student handbook is up to date. Now, the student handbook is different than the building management plans, which is also before you. Um, we have found that when we did a student handbook before, trying to define the clothing for a kindergarten and a high schooler was just too broad, it was too hard to read. So what we have is, we've got the board policy, we've got the- the handbook, and then we've got building management plans that kind of go into the details. And the building management plan should be in line with the student handbook, which should be in line with our board policy.
Is there a dress code in kindergarten?
Don't believe so, is there?
Max made it.
I'm right, I'm just curious if, um, there was a dress, like a dress code.
No, but you- what you'd end up with is, Gaddy straps are not allowed at the high school, so there, what do you do when that?
Looking for finer, something else.
Yeah. And so, it got somewhat ridiculous, and so we found that building management plans was our way around the ridiculousness. And it allowed the parents to have clarity of each building.
You just covered both of those parts?
What's that?
You just covered both of them, didn't you? Three and four?
Three and four.
All right, moving on to the Egyptian Area School Employee Benefit Trust Insurance Renewal. Who handling this, your? Mrs. Bush.
I'm gonna be short, I tried to.
Okay.
Lot of information. Do you want me to do it?
Then be quick.
Um, lot of information. Um, there are some big changes in the Egyptian trust this year, and Mrs. Gaddy and I attended the board meeting for the trust last week. Total change in the structure, so, um, it was voted on by the board managers to, instead of having one premium increase across the board, there will be a tiered structure based on your loss ratios. Actually, I voted against it, just because we didn't have enough time. They gave us a very short timeline to make those changes, and, um, really not enough time to- to digest that information. Didn't really matter, because majority of the- of the groups are in the three to five, which were actually a five percent increase this year, but we could've easily been a twenty percent increase.
Was there any schools, districts at the twenty percent level?
Oh, yes, in our area.
Really?
Yes, yes, people I knew, yes, there were. So, um, it could've been, so, you know, any given year, it- it could be you, and there's still some some areas, I think, that need to be addressed, questions I had, if you're a twenty percenter. And, you know, because everybody has bad years, we've had some really bad years since we've been in the trust, you know, since- since I've been here fifteen years. You know, period claims, you know, claims experiences, it happens in every district where you have those, those, you know, loss years. We could easily be at the twenty percent. So what happens if we're there? You know, we go to twenty percent, our, um, premiums skyrocket, and then things level out, we get a lot better, and we're at the top, we're one of the, you know, lowest recommended increases. Do we ever get credit to go back down? Are we stuck with that, or are we paying that twenty percent penalty, you know, from here on out?
You know- you know the answer to that.
Well, those- those questions, they weren't answered, and they said that would be up to the trust to- to take a look at that. I will tell you, there are other trusts in the area. Um, I don't know that any of them operate the same way that the Egyptian trust had been, where, you know, flooding, you know, everybody has the increase across the board. They're very different. But since- since the, uh, changes that the benefits committee was approved by the board managers, and September one is our renewal, it wouldn't give us a lot of time to make any changes, so, um, it would be administration's recommendation that we stay with the trust, the plan that we have now. Our increase in premium, which five percent really is still a pretty low in premium increase. Um, it would cost us eighty-eight thousand dollars with our group and health insurance increases. And there are a lot of other changes, just, you know, the company handling the claims. June first, actually, our pharmacy, uh, provider changes from CVS script home to Express script. So there are quite a few changes, but our plan will remain the- the same, the plan we're on Plan E one. Uh, same deductible, same out-of-pocket, all- all those things will be the same. So I would recommend, uh, administration does recommend that we stay with the same plan with the trust, but would also ask the board that the administration be allowed to work with the insurance committee. Probably not starting until, I don't know, that they'll wanna come in in the summer, probably not, they wouldn't, I'm sure they want someone to break. Start looking into some of these other trusts and looking into other options. I don't think we wanna be out there on our own, standing alone, year after year, because, you know, then you do, if you have those- those hard years, you do take some significant hits. Can't find anybody to cover you, but at least explore some of the other options that we have. Um, obviously, we're at a five percent rather than a twenty, so our, over the last two and a half years, we had, we've had a, um, you know, under the- the hundred percent mark in claims experience. So we're not in a bad place to be looking right now. So, um, those would be my recommendations, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, if we were to pull out, it'd be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
That's, we're, currently, there's a negative fund balance.
Right.
That's what it would cost us if- if you were to say to me, okay, June first, we're gone, we're out. Um, we give sixty days notice, I have to give them a check right then for that, to cover our share of- of the deficit fund balance. After sixty days, if the deficit is larger, I'd have to give them another check to cover whatever happened in those sixty days. If the fund balance went up, we could get a refund, but it, but yeah, sixty days, you're paying, you're part of what those, um...
So when can we leave where we would not be pending?
When there's a positive fund balance.
So it could be more, and we end up paying next year if we pull up?
It could be, but I, but they're hoping, the actuaries that work for the trust, the increases, some of the changes we've made, which increase our overhead, which will hopefully cover the claims a little- a little bit better, you know, pay- pay more on the claims. And the increases in premiums will flip things and- and increase our fund balances, so that we're leveling. I mean, we have money, um, the IBNR, the incurred but not reported claims that are out there, we have money set aside for that. Obviously, not to fully fund all that, we don't have money in the bank on top of that. So, um, it's not like there's no money to pay those claims, there is money, there's continued money coming in for premiums every month. But, um, so we do look for some turnaround with these changes. But if- if this had not been approved, this tiered structure, they were looking at a fourteen to eighteen percent increase across the board. And as the district business manager, I do not want that for the district, of course. Much prefer the five percent. I was just thinking, and Mrs. Gaddy and I talked about- I was just thinking, and Mrs. Gaddy and I talked about this long and hard, you know, more globally, across the board. You know, I'm actually on that board of managers as a participant in this district. We could have been the twenty percent and looking at that increase, thinking, boy, fourteen percent would have been a lot nicer, so. So just things to think about. I'm hoping if they make changes, if, if we did decide to stay in the trust, that they make changes this big in the future, that we have a little bit more time to, you know, to talk about those things.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we have a recommendation from administration to accept. Per recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Take your pick. All right, Nancy, you roll it?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent, Mrs. Janes?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes.
Well, I forgot to say, we did meet with the MEA Insurance Committee today, um, or MEA leadership and talked about those changes as well, so.
Hopefully that doesn't shake anyone's mind.
I forgot that.
All right. We need to move into closed session?
Make a motion, go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act Five, Illinois compiled statute one twenty-two C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Janes?
Yes.
Mr. Green absent, Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes.